Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf. Committee of the whole meeting. Today is Monday, August 2nd, 2021. It's 5:00 PM. Thank you all for joining us. We have an operational item and a couple of specific consent agenda items, and then we'll look at the remaining consent agenda this evening. We'll start with our operational item. This is to appear as item five tomorrow night. Did we move that up? We did. So it's item five, and this is a resolution approving the preliminary plat of the cottages at McClellan Heights submitted by Kevin Dolan and Dan Dolan-Homes. Kevin and Dan are both here. Gentlemen, thank you for being here. And for this, we will turn it over to our community development director, Mark Hunt, and our city engineer, Brad Morlock. Thank you both for being here and for your work on this project. You have the floor.
Thank you, Honored. I think Brent and I will kind of tag team. I'll do most of presenting. Brent will interject things on the engineering side, and we'll try to get through this. I do have a lengthy presentation for you, a little bit longer than you're probably used to. Case 21-050 is the cottages at McClellan Heights. It's a preliminary plat. Staff's job in this case is to review the preliminary plat and see if it meets city code, mainly our zoning code in our subdivision ordinance. I'm going to trust that you have seen a copy of this or have a copy at your desktop, but this is a representation of the preliminary plat. Right now, I'll take my glasses off so I can see the screen in front of me. Right now, you have 20, 25, 26 units. These are single-family townhomes located near the intersection of Kimberly Road and Lincoln Road, just north of the Manor apartment complex. A little bit of background, Kevin Dolan, Dan Dolan-Homes. It's roughly a 5.9 acre site. I did mention the location, and 26 single-family attached townhomes. Here's an aerial showing the location. It is two parcels that will be platted as one, so the main parcel roughly four acres and about an acre in the other parcel in the northwest corner there. Future land use comprehensive plan and zoning analysis. So future land use designation is urban low intensity. The current zoning designation is R3 mixed residential. This particular plan is, or this particular plat is supported by Comp Plan Gold D. Provide housing options and reinvest in existing neighborhoods. I would note that the R3 mixed residential does allow the townhome use, and urban low intensity complies with the R3. So we're in alignment here from a comp plan perspective. Here's a future land use map exhibit cut from, directly from our comprehensive plan. The light pale yellow color, if you will, is urban low intensity. The project area here is all urban low intensity. Just to the south is the urban medium intensity. That is the Manor condo complex. And then across the street, you have your commercial area. Here's a zoning map. Current zoning is R3. The, what's not shown with zoning is in Davenport, so you're only seeing Bettendorf zoning here. But it would be a similar residential zoning in Davenport as well. I would note there are seven property owners adjacent to this property, directly adjacent, seven property owners directly adjacent. Across the street, you have C1. You have a commercial just to the north, and then R4. In planning terms, this would be a buffering or reduction in use, intensity of use, to go from C1 to R3, then to R2 or R1, as you see here. And then here's Gold D out of your comprehensive plan. Provide housing options and reinvest in existing neighborhoods. Establish strategies to reinvest in existing housing and provide new housing options to help attract residents. Talk a little bit about utilities and stormwater detention. This is a well-developed area, so getting utilities here is not an issue. You're going to go from Kimberly Road for most of them. Potable water will definitely come down from Lincoln. Sanitary sewer and storm sewer are going to follow the terrain and run from north to south. I will note that lot A is reserved for stormwater management.
Mark, quick note on stormwater management, as I know you're all aware. That was discussed pretty heavily at planning and zoning. One option, or one item I did want to point out, there are two down at the southeast corner. Mark, can you indicate where the overflow? Right in there is the basin area. So this entire drainage area, which is about 11 acres, 11, 11 and a half, is currently being collected by two flared end sections, so just open pipes that are connected to our storm sewer system. Those are undersized. They are not able to handle a 100-year event, which is why we see a lot of overtopping. And I think that was discussed quite frequently with residents of the Manor, wondering if this would help or hurt their drainage situation, specifically down the front yards. The beauty of stormwater detention is all of that area now has to be collected and stored in that detention basin. So we're now addressing the 100-year stormwater, the 100-year storm event, I should say, and then discharging at the same rate that it's doing. And one thing, this is obviously a preliminary plat, so there's a few changes that we'll have once we get down to construction plan status. But we will make sure that we're going to try to clean up those two flared ends as part of this project, probably with the city helping out in that because that's our existing infrastructure. Most likely deleting one of them and probably taking the pipe, leaving the detention basin, we'll take that directly to an intake. Right now, it's opening up one flared end to another flared end, not something we're going to want to do. We'll turn that into a fully closed system, but that will be addressed in the construction plan phase.
While I have you here, let me point out a few other attributes of the development. So Lot A, again, kind of where I just circled, is actually the stormwater detention area. Lot B is reserved. It is not being developed at this time, although it does have connectivity. You will get 700 feet roughly of new sidewalk along Kimberly Road, and then there is a connection to another sidewalk to the north. So that will increase our sidewalk connectivity in this part of town. You'll also end up with pedestrian crossings and pedestrian buttons at the intersection here of Kimberly Road and Lincoln.
And I should add those, the developer will be responsible for installing those. There's crosswalks at all the other locations, but not at this corner since those were built out as those corners developed.
Are we doing five foot or four foot?
He's still following the four foot, sir. The interior of McClellan Lane, I'm sorry, McClellan Court, will also have sidewalks on both sides at the four foot as well, and there'll be a sidewalk into the development along Lincoln. I think that'll be the first sidewalk on that portion of Lincoln at all.
I believe so. Mark?
Sir?
On the sidewalk, this drawing appears to show it right at the curb. You're not going to put it at the curb, are you? You have to allow snow storage, right?
Yeah, no, it will not be right at the curb.
It's not at the back of curb. It might be hard to see at that scale. It's, the black line would be the right away.
I was looking up at the corner up there, and it looked like it was right at the curb. So I was wanting to ask.
It's standard, one foot adjacent to the right away. So there is still the snow storage boulevard.
Brent?
Yes?
What is your grade on McClellan Court?
The steepest section, I believe from the plan and profile, was about 6.5%. Initially, there were sections that were 8%, which was our max, but with the change by removing the connection to Crestline, they were able to flatten that out quite a bit. 6, 6.5, somewhere in there. But that's just the, kind of the one tangent section, the straight section of the road. Once you get down to the cul-de-sac, it was more in the 2.5, 3%. So they're able to pick that up quite a bit.
Very good.
Your Honor, just, you know, we've talked about a trail at the staff level on this sidewalk on the west side because the, when you get, or the east side, on the west side, because when you get to the east side, to the bottom near Kimberly Road, the hillside gets right in the way. We didn't react to the trail here because we have, I guess, a discussion and some difference of opinion at staff that we may not need all of a four-lane facility when I-74 is totally opened up, and that Kimberly could be converted potentially to either traffic to and at each other and utilize one of the east, the westbound lanes for bike lane, potentially all the way down to McManus Park. We want the opportunity to look at that before we would just decide to put a trail all the way down through Slavens because we might have a perfectly good street or at least one lane of a, of a two-lane that could be converted to bike trail easily and not very costly long-term. And frankly, I think several of us believe that will be the case.
Yeah, we'll just want to see what the traffic does once we actually take away the last Iowa exit and people start feeling their way around.
Yeah, I don't think people realize the last Iowa exit goes away at Kimberly Road. It goes all the way down to Grant Street. So you really will have a significant traffic change on the volume on Kimberly, and I think we kind of like want to assess that so we can understand if that's a viable alternative.
But in the meantime, you're still going to put the sidewalk in?
Yes.
The four foot goes in as required. I don't know if the right away is significant enough to go to a 10-foot. That might be something to think about if by chance we need it, but, and the other reason we thought about that is if you didn't have to assess all those people down at Slavens to put it in front of their place, putting it out in the street for free might be an acceptable accommodation down there. So we really do want to take a look at that, but we do want to wait till we see what the impact is on Kimberly and how we could accommodate that.
Mark, go ahead.
Sorry, Your Honor.
No, no problem.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, while I still got you here, just to meet the setback on the rear yard, there will be a berm. So that's how you get to the 35-foot setback here, is there'll be a berm along with the sidewalk. So that goes back to our recent zoning ordinance update, where that berming provides that shorter 35-foot setback instead of the 50. Brent, do you want to cover the grading plan a little bit? Here's the most recent grading plan.
Yeah, this was the updated one. Only real major change, I think, that was discussed at planning and zoning concerns was the slope coming off the backside of Crestline. So currently, it's about a 2, 2.5 to 1 slope. Now, obviously, it's, it is somewhat stable in that it has growth on it. To do so, to build those four units that are just to the east of the end of Crestline, that area will have to be disturbed. Now, they're showing a 3 to 1 slope, which was, is our minimum back slope. That slope that you can see does impede into the backs of those four units. What will most likely happen is depending on exactly what finished floor elevation, so how high those buildings are set, most likely they'll end up with a, I'm going to guess, three to four-foot landscape wall at the backside of the patios. Now, they're not showing the wall now because they don't know the exact finished floor, but similar situation kind of exists that Dolan has, along Hopewell, right at the corner of Hopewell and Devil's Glen, where you got a back slope coming back down into those homes. They were able to make that one work. This one's a little steeper slope. I think in talking with their engineer that he thought that they would most likely need a, like I said, a three to four-foot landscape terrace wall to help relieve some of that slope. But the concern that got brought up in planning and zoning was that that wall was going to be right up against the property line, and potentially, it sounded like, a few of the residents thought it would actually impede the flow of water and so make water back up onto their property. You know, that absolutely could not happen. We would not let them dam anything up. That'll still be that same slope coming off the backside of Crestline. They may just stop it a little short of the units and put in some landscape walls, which is absolutely allowable within our codes.
Throw fire and plant access. Brent will probably speak to this more than I will, but just the access is provided off Lincoln Road. We're going to have some stop signs. It's going to be a T-intersection. I think I mentioned the new sidewalk and the pedestrian buttons, and I've got a graphic for you, Brent, if you want to go there.
Yeah, I just, I put this together real quick this morning, trying to give an illustration graphically of what this intersection is going to look like. I think some of the folks at planning and zoning might have had a hard time picturing what the configuration would be. So any of the traffic coming in and out on Lincoln will not be impeded. So if you're coming from the east, you know, north, south, east or west, whichever direction you're coming through there, you will not have to stop at that intersection. We don't want to take the chance that we're backing traffic up into the intersection. We're going to stop the traffic in the north-south direction, which will clean up several items. Right now, in the heaviest portions that I saw, I went back and looked at some traffic camera video from various times. You could get five or six cars that during peak hours that would stack around that corner. So then you're stacking on a corner, and it's causing issues of people being able to make that turn in because it's getting narrowed. You're in a 90-degree curve there. So by creating a true intersection here, it now becomes illegal for cars to stop in that intersection. So they have to stop at those stop signs. You clear that intersection, that takes care of all of your turning movements. And actually, I think the biggest benefit will be for the resident that has the driveway that comes right into there. He was talking about how he frequently had issues getting out of their driveway because cars would be stacked on that existing curve. Well, now that's illegal, and they will have a straight shot through. They might have to wait their turn at the intersection, but they would no longer have cars backed up in front of it.
So a point of clarification, on an earlier slide, it appeared that this home parcel is zone C1. I don't know if that's accurate or if I misread that.
Yeah, we don't have any of the Davenport zoning on there.
See that right there, where it says?
It's on the other side of the street.
Oh, you have this one to the north.
Yeah, right there. Is that the house or no?
There's a, there's a home there. That is not part of the project site.
Right, I agree.
That's across Lincoln. There is a home there. It's a non-conforming use. It is C1. I think it used to be a gas station, if somebody helped me out.
So my, I guess my question is, as we're looking at traffic configurations of not what is there, but what could be there?
Tell me where you want to stop.
So it's, I mean, conceivably, the house goes away. That could be a commercial.
It could be. It's a very constrained lot because it's triangular, so you've got front yards all over.
It would actually be a good thing for us. We would no longer allow that access to come out onto Lincoln. We would force it to come out to the west onto Middle, or Middle slash Lincoln. To pull it away from the intersection would be a benefit for us.
Thank you.
Just the shape of this lot can really constrain it for any future development.
Have we talked to Davenport at all about their thoughts on that?
On the C1 lot?
We have not. All of this is in Bettendorf. That's who that whole street is.
I mean, the flow is kind of there, coming from there.
Yes, so the, I guess the intent of this is to try to clean up the queuing that's happening right at that curve. You will absolutely by adding any type of traffic. We are going to be adding a number of vehicles, an extra number of vehicles to this intersection. But again, we now have a stop T-intersection, and we have a traffic signal immediately adjacent there that we can play with timings if we need to. It's almost a 50-50 split right now. They clear that queue pretty much every single time. It's a 26 seconds east-west and 30 north-south, so it's, it's pretty heavily weighted to make sure everybody that's coming around this curve gets cleared out of there.
So with this picture here?
Hold on.
There will be a sidewalk there on the south side of the road there where that semi truck is there, right?
Yes, yes, there will be. Correct.
All right, Greg, did you have something? I was kind of letting it go conversational, but we're starting to get people talking, you know, getting ready and talking. Go ahead.
I raised my hand.
Yeah, you're in good shape.
School training.
Army training, sir.
Army training. One of several things that I don't like about this plan, the main one is this intersection. Have you guys even tentatively looked at some modifications down the road that could be made to alleviate this intersection or mitigate it or?
So there is one thing that we have discussed, not in a whole lot of detail, but that we've looked at, would be punching Middle Road back through onto Lincoln Road, which at this point, if you were ever able to do that, which Kimberly, onto Kimberly, I'm sorry. Yes, onto Lincoln. Sorry, onto Kimberly, thank you, would be you could potentially eliminate the connection, the north-south piece there between Middle Drive and Middle Road, and then that stoplight is only serving the purpose to serve this subdivision if we're able, ever able to do that. Otherwise, there's not much additionally you can do, but that would provide a definite measure of relief. Now, that would add another traffic signal most likely in that short distance between Lincoln and Middle, but, you know, we do have those all over town that are in the 300-foot plus minus range.
Well, if it goes down to, if it goes down to two lanes at some point, I'd look at that whole intersection anyway, right?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm just saying, I would really encourage us at some point, maybe during planning or something, to maybe get this on the long-term radar or something. Because this, they shouldn't have never allowed that.
See if we actually have enough right away at this point.
You need a better view.
Sure. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yeah, Frank, go ahead.
Brent, do you think we're going to be successful with that stop sign there, which is going to be eastbound traffic, right? Right on the curb there, you got the stop sign, and then you come out to?
Yes, you're, yes.
Okay. You think you're going to be successful with that, or are we just creating another white post in Heatherstone situation where they slow down if they're lucky and they run it most of the time? I think Chief knows what I'm talking about.
I think since you will have opposing traffic on there, I would hope, but ultimately I can't, there's not much we can do, frankly, if people are just blatantly ignoring the law at that point.
And I don't think the chief has enough officers to put one out there just for that stop sign, but that's one thing that I see going south on us there. And I totally agree with Greg. It would be nice in the future if maybe we could bring that, just eliminate that area there and come right out to Kimberly.
Yeah, it actually does look like we do have the right away through there. So it's potentially something we could, that we could look at. But yeah, ultimately, you know, we can only design to what, you know, is good traffic engineering principles. You can't design for people breaking the law, unfortunately.
This will be a legal stop sign?
Yes, yep. We will have to run an ordinance through for both of these. We will also make that section between, between there and the intersection establish a formal no parking zone through there as well. Because we did hear that occasionally you get a stopped car, mostly, I think related, Scott, to that home that you're talking about, that if they needed to have on-street parking, they could do it to the north, not on the east-west lake. You know, something else to keep in mind, that the volume of traffic that we're talking about here, I know that was a big point of contention at planning and zoning, of projected traffic and using the manuals that we do that are industry standards. Actually, the PD helped me out with this. We set up a tube counter up at Black Lion Circle last week because that is the exact product that they are building here. That's exactly what they're geared towards, the attached townhomes. There are 22 units there. We have 26 here, but they had a total, we did a 24-hour count, I think it was last Thursday. There was only 141 vehicles that came and entered that entire subdivision during that 24-hour period. So that equated to 6.4 trips per unit. We were estimating the seven, or even as far as single-family, you can go, if you saw the video, it was nine, nine and a half. So I think we're still talking about a very low volume of traffic that the subdivision's going to generate, and that is backed up with existing data now from within our own town and this exact product.
Anything else? All right, Mark, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just some additional information. We did, we did this at P&amp;Z, so I want to do the same thing for council tonight. That kind of talks about some of the analysis that we do on the back end that you don't always see. And so I've got just a few exhibits here. I'm going to kind of go through them conversationally, if you will. The first one I want to start with is this concept of development suitability. It's been posited that our comp plan is the, is the, is the final decider of what can be developed and what can't be developed, and that's incorrect. Our comprehensive plan is just that. It's a plan. It's actually the starting point, not the endpoint, and city code and the action of this council is actually the final decider of what can and can't be developed within our community. And so when we do that, we look at development suitability. We do have a comprehensive plan. We do check that. We also look at floodplain, jurisdictional wetlands. Threatened nature species is not really city's purview, but we've reached out to DNR on that. We look at zoning. We also look at the history of the zoning as well to see what the intent is. We look at our park planning, soil types and water sheds. I'm going to walk you through some of these. You don't often get to see these, but it's what we do as professional planners. So this is out of our comprehensive plan. This is a suitability map. This is a general map. This map is not at a scale that can be used for any site analysis. It's a starting point, not an endpoint. You'll notice that the red areas are considered areas where you would have to either mitigate the environmental concerns, mainly slope or floodplain. We do that all the time. In fact, the city of Bettendorf's industrial park, which is roughly in this area, is completely in red, and since I've been here, we've done four or five projects in the industrial park. So it's not that things can't be done in this area, it's that there are other measures that must be taken. Someone might look at this map and then wonder about this project area, which honestly, due to the labeling, you can't hardly see it. So we've got other tools that we do use. So here's a floodplain map. I had to really zoom it out to actually get the floodplain in. So this is a FEMA floodplain map showing the 1% flood chance in blue and then the 500-year floodplain in gold or yellow, whatever color that is. This is the project area, so it is not in a designated floodplain. This is LiDAR. This is laser data that shows slope. This is much more accurate data than what you saw in the comprehensive plan exhibit. So this map was showing us that lots of the areas in this neighborhood have high slopes. This particular project area has some areas that are somewhat steep and some areas that aren't steep at all. All of that can be mitigated through fill and through engineering, and that's Brent's job to make sure that's done correctly. But this map will show you, as it does, that much of the area is not intense slope, and the areas that are will be mitigated through required fill and best practices there. Secondly, I think the history of this area is important in that you understand that there's been talk about old growth and things like that. That is not the case here. Going back to the 1930s, we have pictures. This area was being used as either pasture land, maybe hayfield, and it's been harvested at different points for the lumber, it appears. So here's a 1930s photo. Project area you'll see is not nearly as wooded as it is on the most recent aerial show, photo I showed you. By the 1950s, it's become more wooded and the development of the neighborhood is starting to occur in Davenport. You don't yet have the Manor complex or the commercial uses to the, to the east. By the 1960s, you do see the manors come into play. The area is completely cleared of timber except for the very southern portion. So this is a big change. Again, it's being used for pasture land or hayfield or something of that nature. And then it stays through the 70s. As you get into the 80s and 90s, you start to see the trees come back. So these trees are relatively young trees. And then, sorry, this image is a little darker, but the 1990s, you do see where, it's actually been, honestly, has not been up, kept up. It probably should have been adversity ordinance mode or kept, cut down, but that didn't happen.
So these are just scrub trees, mostly?
I would describe them as such, yes. And then we've pulled, it's amazing, the changing mapping technology, just, sorry. That's interesting. 1979, here's a zoning map. It's R3, you'll see there. And we have these maps back to 1971 that we can get digitized. They're kind of hard to get to fit on the copier, but you can see it is through many comprehensive plan cycles, through many councils. It has remained, my entire life, and I'm almost 50, it has remained an R3. People have talked about park land development. This is an excerpt from your most recent park plan. There is an area for park development outlined here, north of the project area. The project area itself has not been designated as such on your most recent park development plan. The soils here are what's called Downs Urban Land Complex. They're a silty loam. Loam is a soil that is pretty common around here and pretty good for building, actually. These soils are not different than the soils of the surrounding properties. If you were to expand this map, these 416-twos and 416-twoDs and the E2Es or the 3Es would all be intermixed. It's a silty-loam mix. It's pretty common soil here in the Quad Cities. You're probably standing on it, or our homes are probably built on it right now. We've talked a little bit about water and drainage. I think it's really important to know that we looked at how the drainage is actually underlying this site, and just to the north, just one block north, one parcel to the north, everything flows to the north. So from here forward is away from the project site. This is the line of demarcation. So it may appear that this is a big ravine that's receiving a lot of water, when in fact, it is not. I don't know why I'm flashing here. So to the south, it takes water, but from, everything from the north, take Middle Road, if you will. Everything north of Middle Road goes away from this project site. Recommended action, we have a positive staff recommendation. It was approved 4-2 by Planning and Zoning Commission, and we recommend approval with the conditions outlined in our staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions? Frank?
Mark, all the, all the trees and everything that are taken down will be hauled away, right? There's not going to be any burn permits issued?
No, no, that's no longer, hasn't been allowed in years in construction, yeah.
Because there are a lot of trees in there.
Yes, Scott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess a few things. We've received a number of pieces of correspondence, and I think you've done a really good job of illustrating some of those concerns. And I think even the two people that voted against it at P&amp;Z indicated that there was some degree of uncomfortability or uncertainty, I think regarding stormwater and runoff. So I think we need to spend at least a little bit of time to play that out so that, for example, the manor down the road, it's your contention that folks in that downwater area would actually benefit. And can you explain a little bit more of how that topography gets managed and how the stormwater flow would in fact be enhanced for those folks that are, including council that may need a refresher?
Sorry, I've got a long way to get there.
As you do that, speaking of correspondence, I'm told we've got some new correspondence. We'll get to you via email that came late today, apparently. So it did not make the original packet, of course, because that was put together on Friday. So anything after that can be available to us. It'll be emailed to you, we'll have a hard copy.
It's been, the packet's been revised, so they're in the revised packet. But these came to us mostly from Jerry. I don't know if you were included originally in all those, so we can email you those in the morning. And they are in the revised packet if you go back in and look at the packet.
There you have it.
Okay. What you have on the screen, Scott, is the proposed grading plan. So essentially, everything, every bit of stormwater runoff that's being generated onsite, wherever possible, there's always small areas that may or may not be able to, but has to be collected either in your storm sewer system or in rear yard ditches, collection things, things like that, and then all taken to the stormwater basin. So the full five and a half acres of property here is generally draining on the west side to the road, from the rear of the lots to the front, being collected in the storm sewer system and then piped in. And kind of the same situation on the east side as well. There is, there's a flared end section right there. And that, if you see those contours coming from the west of how they're wrapping down into, that is, the off-site drainage is all being funneled to that point. So that's the property that's, or the runoff that's coming from the adjacent property, the Rouse property, to the west. That's being collected, so there's no worry that that is being dammed up and pushed anywhere else. They're not even grading up to that property line. They're accommodating that runoff, collecting it, and then, again, taking that to the stormwater basin. There is also a ditch on the south side of the property here that's collecting the runoff that's coming off Crestline Drive. So they're adding a couple of intakes at the end of Crestline Drive, which right now do not exist. That water is just flying right off the end of Crestline and down the hill. Definitely potential cause for erosion there. They're going to add some intakes to help collect that, pipe that water down to that ditch, and then controlled take that, again, to the detention basin. So everything, every bit of runoff that's being generated on this site, plus the off-site drainage, that all they have to do is accommodate that. They don't have to truly detain it. Really, you get in the mechanics of stormwater retention at that point. But it's all being funneled through this basin and then going to be the controlled release that we do through the outlet structure, you know, different sized pipes, shapes of your, of your structure, and then taken to our storm sewer system on Kimberly Road. Right now, the situation exists where all of that water is flowing open across the field or down through the ravine through there, down to those two pipes that I said, those flared end sections that, for 11 and a half acres, I can tell you, are not accommodating 100-year event. There's no way those pipes can do so. They probably would need to be double that size. So they're going to be able to, right now, if you get that big 100-year event, those are going to take what they can. The rest of that water is going to rush down the hill. Some of it's probably going to jump the curb and end up on Kimberly. The rest is going to run down the front yard of the manor. And you can even see that if you look at our aerial topography. You can see there's kind of a defined swale down the, the front yards of the manor because they have to accommodate that runoff and keep it away from it. So, you know, stormwater retention is truly made to help the properties that are downstream of them. You know, you don't get a benefit upstream, you get a benefit downstream. And that's exactly what, you know, the manor is here. So I think it will absolutely better their situation with regards to stormwater runoff.
And then in reading some of the correspondence, there's also a well that's onsite?
Yes, so we've been, we've been made aware that there's a well. We do not know, we haven't been able to confirm if it's being used. I think I sent you all an email this afternoon. Per the city of Davenport planner, again, that's on the Davenport parcel, they are of the understanding that that well has been abandoned, that it has not been capped properly, so it's still there. And then I also sent you some excerpts from the county's well ordinance because they are the responsible authority for wells and septics. There's minimum horizontal clearance, which is really no different. We have the same thing in regards to water, public water mains, five American mains and sewers. But we're talking possible contamination sources here. The, really, the contamination sources are sewers. That's your biggest one. So there's a 20, or a 10-foot minimum requirement from closed sewer systems, which we're not even close to that. We're well beyond that with the design here. There's a minimum clearance from property lines. We think that the well is roughly in that southeast corner of the property. And then there's a 25-foot clearance from ditches and ponds. And again, the only real defined ditch we have is on that far south end of the property, which then leads to the wet pond, again, well past the 25-foot requirement.
I thought it was on the northwest.
Well, go ahead. Oh, you still got the floor?
I do, thank you, Your Honor. And in looking at the, just with respect to my colleagues, I just have two things. R3, refresh my memory, what could go? Because this is, like you said, back at least into the late 70s, it's been R3. So what are some possible uses in an R3?
Yeah, so it's our most intense housing district. So I believe I said this on the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I think it's like 107 or 110 units. If you don't give any room for right-of-way, egress and access, you could put 110-unit apartment complex here. That would be allowed per code. So this is much less intense than that.
Okay. And noting, this is a replat, not a rezone. So again, this is not necessarily a configuration of what's, it's more just like the lot, the lot layout, essentially.
It's a preliminary plat, yeah.
Not a huge change. And I think, you know, and I'll just speak directly to Dylan. It's not that we have a right to ask this, but I think some of the correspondence has been emotional. And a lot of it is centered around even the name, the McClellan, you know, cottages, where it's really not at McClellan. And I don't know if there'd ever be a consideration with respect to the neighborhood and, you know, the flavor of this, to consider revising that. I mean, I'll throw that out just because you haven't seen the correspondence that the council has seen. But I think it'd go a long way possibly to, you know, alleviate some of those emotions.
We do recognize that the name has become a distraction. And in the spirit of cooperation, we would be willing to make a change to the name.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, Bill.
Brandon, is this pond proposed to be dry or wet?
It is a wet basin, which is our preferred. It gives you the biggest water quality benefit compared to a dry basin, obviously more aesthetically pleasing as well.
Thank you. Lisa, did you have something?
I'll just save it for tomorrow night.
Okay. Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. That wet pond, it's not going to leak through the bottom into the basement of Slavens, is it, of the manor?
No, so to have a wet basin, they're required to have some type of impermeable soil liner on the bottom. Generally, it's, the clays that we have in town are perfectly suitable for that. But no, that, there should be no leakage of there, otherwise they wouldn't be able to maintain their, their water levels.
Any other questions? All right, this is an item to appear tomorrow night. Obviously, we'll have a con, for discussion. Mr. Plain has something?
Just a point. In one of the correspondences, a gentleman referred to Chapter 28. And Mark and I talked about this. Our website is full of old data that's getting cleaned up by the new website. We think that Chapter 28 that he continues to refer to is an old city code that's still on the website. As best we might be able to figure that. I'm not sure, Mark, if you want to further elaborate. But we don't have a Chapter 28 that deals with our subdivision ordinance currently, so we were confused by that. But we wanted to make sure if he were to stand up tomorrow and say, you don't even comply with your own zoning code, Chapter 28, because that, that chapter's long gone in a previous code, I believe.
That's correct, Mr. Plain. And talking with staff, some of whom have been here much longer than I, we did realize that it's probably an old PDF copy. I'm not sure how one attained it, even if it was on our website. I don't know that to be true either. But we do believe that's an old code, an outdated code. It's not from our zoning ordinance or our subdivision ordinance.
Well, let's entertain a motion that this remain as item five for tomorrow night.
Moved.
All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we'll take it up tomorrow. Our consent agenda items, let's look at Consent F. This is a resolution approving a revised site plan for the Meadows subdivision. Mr. Plain?
Your Honor, I just want to make sure you get introduced to Taylor Bezwick because this body hasn't seen Taylor.
Taylor, welcome aboard.
Taylor's our newest planner. Been on board six, seven, eight months?
Just a couple.
Four months. Seems like six or seven after the last meeting, doesn't it?
They haven't brought you around yet. There must be a reason, Taylor. You're probably working hard and they didn't want us interfering.
Taylor came to us from Scott County. It was a great hire for us. And he was working the computer with Magic Key and poor Greg were here the other night in the hot seats up front, did a heck of a job at P&amp;Z. But we knew you probably had not met Taylor, so we wanted to make sure you got to see him and understood who he was sitting there next to Jeff and Greg.
Welcome aboard. Thanks for being here, Taylor. All right, Consent F. Mark Hunt, our community development director?
I do not have a PowerPoint prepared for this one, Your Honor. So give me one second, sir. This one is relatively simple.
F, what's the revision?
Yeah, really what they're doing is just changing the driveway alignments to accommodate the orientations of their, of their homes so that they can have decks and patios. And you may wonder why the driveway matters, but it lets them flip the house, if you will, and that then accommodates these little things here. So it's relatively easy, but it does, it does change more than 10% of the site plan. So it requires council's approval. Staff fully recommends it, and it passed with flying colors at P&amp;Z.
And we did still review this, you may remember when this one first came through, is several of these situations for sufficient snow storage, which was a big concern.
That hasn't changed.
All the way, no, it's just reconfigured, still the same amount, just in different blocks.
Same driveway width?
Same total width, correct.
A bit to accommodate?
Yeah, it actually helps them, yeah, helps them prevent a building code violation that they were bumping up against.
Okay. Streets are the same, sewers are the same. All the big stuff.
Nothing else changed.
Yes, sir.
Any questions on this? All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's agenda as Consent, item F.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's look at Consent G. This is a site development plan for 2505 Maplecrest.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me, again, just kind of orient the computer here a little bit. You may recognize Maplecrest Road and Victoria Street. This is the site in question. Proposed use is a coffee shop with drive-through access. The zoning is C1, that is permissible use. I want to get you to the more meat potatoes here of the site plan.
Stacking.
Yeah, I think you'll be happy, sir, with the stacking issue. I can anticipate your questions. This U-shaped drive, so different than another one near another local high school that you might be used to. This U-shaped drive allows for, I think it's 12, stacking double what we require. It is not the opposing drive-throughs like, like you might be thinking of. This is a different site. They handle everything onsite. You come in through the northwest corner and then wrap around the building. The pickup window is, is here and then exit back this way. With a lot of stacking onsite, no, even if you were to start stacking this way, you have a fairly large area as people are coming in to get into that queue. It was recommended positively by staff with no reservations and was approved by the planning commission without any naivots.
Any questions on this one? We'll start with Greg and then we'll go to Bill.
Is this drive, drive-up only?
They, they will have a customer service window, but I don't know that there's actual customers inside. There's some outdoor facility component of it as well, but not really much of an interior space.
My question was answered. Thank you, Your Honor.
Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. On our packet, we showed a landscape plan. The landscape plan cut off a portion of the sidewalk.
So that?
I want to make sure that the landscape plan is considered wrong.
I can answer that one for you, Jerry. The initial submittal did only have the sidewalk connecting from their driveway north. That was a comment staff made to make sure they provided it for the entire length. I don't believe the landscape plan got updated. The site plan did. And really, that's all we need, is the site development plan.
And then the second question is, do we anticipate the need for a crosswalk across Maplecrest to the high school parking lot?
I'm going to have to probably defer to chief on that one.
You know, I would.
I think until we see the usage.
I would say, I would wait and see, let's see what we have. And if it's an issue, then that's something that's easily done, but.
Does anybody walk to school anymore? I see so many kids drive to school.
No, I am.
Oh, you just mean the curb cuts.
I'm anticipating that they'll park in the parking lot, then walk across, get to the park.
Oh, that's probably true, yeah.
Yeah, we could absolutely look at maybe putting in a little extension from across the street there if we do see the, the need that's coming across.
Other questions here? We got one more. Yeah, Greg?
Is there another development down south of this on Victoria as well?
It's kind of covered up by that.
No, that's all open. That's all open space.
Yes, sir, that is all open space at this point, I believe, if you look here on the screen.
Yeah, down toward Tech Drive more, this, I mean, okay, there's nothing else down that way.
Not right now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Absolutely. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's consent agenda as G. So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll take that up as G. Let's take a look at our consent agenda for tomorrow night, a little bit shorter than we're used to. Are there any items on the consent agenda? Any particular council member would like to discuss or ask questions about it this time? All right, seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the entire consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any items to be added by council this evening? I do not have any. All right, hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Bill had something, Your Honor?
Bill, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank staff for taking the time to put together a very concise report to council on this project. I know there's been a lot of questions in the past and a lot of concern from the neighbors. And I think what you did was very well done, and I certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, we'll share that with staff.
Yeah, please do. Okay. Will we get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, we're adjourned. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to City Council. This is the Bettendorf City Council meeting for Tuesday, August 3, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Connors?
Here.
Nauman?
Here.
Sexer?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
Webster?
Here.
Thank you all for being here. Can you hear me now? Okay. Thank you all for being here. Before we do the pledge of allegiance, I'm going to ask for a little help today. We have Troop 199 in the House. They meet at Lord's School. We have from Troop 99, Mason Benke, Jack Lawrence, Phoenix Holsing, Brian Berg, Caleb Schrader, David Todd, Jack Gershkus, and their leaders, Brian Gershkus and Stephen Holsing. So scouts, if you would please come up here and join us. Everybody else, if you would all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join me in the pledge of allegiance, which will lead tonight, which will be led tonight by Troop 199. Can you turn it off?
I'm just going to throw it down.
Throw it outside.
Okay. Gentlemen, are you ready? Will you have the floor?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you could please remain standing for our invocation given by Bettendorf Chaplain and Pastor of Hope Baptist Church, Pastor Mark Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's bow our heads in prayer, please. Father, we do thank you for the privilege that you've given us to take part in this gathering tonight. We thank you for the freedom that it represents that we have in this nation. And Lord, I lift my city up to you tonight in that this council and this administration has requested that I intercede on behalf of this city to seek your guidance. To seek your guidance and your wisdom in this meeting, I come before you. Father, every person in this room wants the same thing. They want their city to be prosperous and safe, and I pray that in all things, that you would give guidance and civility and help us to keep in mind that goal, that we would do what is best for our city, that you would give the, those in authority, the understanding of the weight of the stewardship of their position, and you would give them wisdom to execute that duty. And I pray, Father, your blessings on this meeting tonight, and I do pray these things in thy name, amen.
Amen. All right, thank you Pastor Mark, we appreciate it, you and all you do, great to see you again. All right, now as we talked about, this is the time for public requests of council. Since the Dolan development is not on the agenda for a public hearing, this would be the opportunity for you to discuss your thoughts with regard to that issue. You have the right to be heard at public requests of council, which is the fourth item on the agenda here tonight. The item after public requests of council is the actual resolution and discussion for council to vote. You're allowed to speak at public requests of council, however, this is not an interrogation between you and the members of the staff or council. You may give us your opinion on what you think is right or wrong with the development. There'll be no questions answered that are directed at staff or council or the developer. We'll have our discussion at number five, the resolution. Please be advised that council has all seen the tape of the plan and zone commission meeting in its entirety, we have all reviewed the notes, the meeting notes of that meeting, and we've received your emails and read all of those that you've sent to us. We've had a presentation from our staff last night, about an hour, walking through all the questions that were raised at P&amp;Z and answering those for staff, and we have a very good understanding of the issues here at hand and all of the items that you've raised thus far. Please keep in mind that we've already heard these arguments and we are interested in hearing what you have today that might be new or different. We ask that you not be redundant tonight. If someone has made your point, the one that you were intending to make, please be courteous, and you don't have to make the point, it's been made. We'll limit our comments to two minutes per person and try not to repeat those comments that have already been made. Above all, we will be civil and we will be courteous, we will be respectful. If people become uncivil or discourteous or unkind, we will ask them to leave. There'll be no clapping or stomping or whistling or disorderly disruptive behaviors, there'll be no profane language or gestures, there'll be no personal attacks. Focus on your request of council, this is your opportunity to tell us what you want and why. Once I've closed the public requests of council, council will then discuss the matter and take action. In that part of the proceeding, your input is no longer needed nor allowed, you may stay for that or the entire meeting, should you wish to do so. If you choose to leave after council votes at the resolution number five, please do so quietly and orderly so that we can continue with the rest of our meeting, you see that there are other items for us to consider. We thank you very much for coming this evening and sharing your thoughts with us, we appreciate that very much, it's a great example of democracy, and we hope that you will take that opportunity to be heard and ask council what you wish to ask them. As was the case at the plan and zone commission meeting, we ask that you go to the podium in the back of the room to have your comments heard. You'll be asked to state your name and your address for the record, and then make your brief remarks. If we begin to hear duplicative statements, I know, I'll know then that it's time to move on with the council portion of the meeting. So please be orderly, one by one, and state your name and address, we'd like to hear from you. First, we're going to hear from anybody else who's here for a public request of council that does not relate to the Dolan development. So if you're here for another reason, we'd like to hear from you, you can be heard by approaching the podium in the back, please state your name and address. Anybody for a non-Dolan development issue? All right, not seeing any, so let's move to those who want to be heard about the Dolan development, again, if you can orderly head back to the podium, one by one, state your name and your address and your request of council, and feel free to tell them why you want them to vote the way you wish for them to vote.
My name is Dave Dunkum, I am the president of the Manor condo association. We have over 95 units and they were all built in 1960. We have many residents that are 70 and 80 years old and have lived at the manor for many, many years. We enjoy our wildlife, we have deer, coyotes, foxes, owls, et cetera, et cetera, and we are very proud of that. We also take pride in our grounds, and anyone that has driven by the manor knows how our grounds are kept. One thing we do not need is we do not need more water runoff, we do not need more snow melt, and we do not need a view of a retention pond. It just is not a good fit. We urge you to support us. We hope that you make a decision based on what is needed and not what kind of revenue will be generated. And once again, I ask for your support, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dunkum. All right, who's next?
I'm Joe Keough, I live at 442 Mississippi Boulevard for 31 years. I'm here to support my neighbors who oppose this development, and I have been thinking a lot about it of late, and my personal philosophy is to look for win-wins, and it does not appear to me that this is a win-win, when there appear to be so many of my friends and neighbors who are made very uncomfortable by this project, so I respectfully ask that you deny the development, thank you.
Thank you, sir, always nice to see you, Joe.
My name is Gail Hoff, I live in the manor in Building 11, which our address is 1103, unit number. I've been to all of these meetings when I've heard all of our concerns. I hope that we've made it clear to everyone in the city of Bettendorf, especially to our council people, that this is not something we want to see happen in our neighborhood for very many reasons, some that Dave mentioned, some that are safety concerns and just concerns for the whole neighborhood and how it will affect the residents that live there now. So please consider voting no on this agenda item, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoff.
Hello, my name is Kirk Vandecar, I live at 1646 Broad Lawn. I've lived there eight years, and before that I lived in Central Davenport, in a home that I bought in 1974. So I have driven past this proposed site thousands of times and never once did I dream that this was a suitable site for houses and another road. I could envision a frontage road off of Kimberly with a few houses on nice, large lots, one story in the front facing Kimberly with a walkout lower level looking out to the ravine, that would be a fabulous place to live. But filling in the ravine, I just, I can't see it. And then to build houses and a road that exits onto two tight hairpin curves instead of a frontage road on Kimberly just seems ridiculous. Can this project even be accomplished technically? I asked the city staff for a soils report of this site, and I was given a generalized soil report from the USDA Soil Conservation Department, but the only useful information in that document was the soil types in the south and west portions of the site are on slopes in excess of 10%. And this clearly isn't enough information to reach a conclusion on the suitability of the site for projects such as this. How should you obtain the information and when should it be required? Before or after construction? Well, surely the only possible answer is before, okay? Why would anyone build first and then ask questions later? A geotechnical analysis of the site is clearly called for before preliminary approval is given. Such a study would tell us what type of soil is in the ravine? Could there be unique soil types? Could the soil be highly erosive? Could it be difficult to revegetate after disturbance? What's the bearing capacity? Is there high shrink-swell potential? Could there be a tendency to develop sinkholes? We know of at least one well near this site, are there other wells, cisterns, or caves in this area? We don't know, because no analysis has been done. The city should ask for completion and submittal of a geotechnical analysis prior to approving a preliminary plat. Such an investigation would serve four critical functions. Number one, it would determine the physical and engineering properties of the soils within the area of the proposed construction with respect to their suitability for the support of the proposed road and houses. Number two, it would make recommendations for the earthwork, pavements, and the type of foundation suited for the prevailing soil conditions. Number three, it would evaluate and recommend the design procedures for the various soil, pavement, and foundation items in accordance with current engineering practices. And number four, I think this one's really important, it would protect Bettendorf. Since upon approval of a preliminary plat, the developer has the right to install public improvements in compliance with the preliminary plat to final plat approval, it follows that the city should want to know that the soils will support the eventual construction of the houses and the road before approving a plat for that very same reason. I don't believe I have time to go into another area, so I'm going to skip some of this. A soil analysis that is needed for stormwater management and erosion control plans, as well as determining foundation requirements for buildings and pavement designs, depends on taking soil samples and analyzing them, taking soil density tests, groundwater depths, and other testing to determine suitability for development. I respectfully suggest that the city require the developer to submit a proper geotechnical analysis. To approve the preliminary plat without the analysis is putting the cart before the horse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vandecar. Yes, sir.
I'm Bob Anderson, I live at the manor, and I've been to all these meetings and heard all the reports from these fellows, they did their job with the guidelines they were given. I was listening to the TV presentation last night, one of the gentlemen asked about removal of trees and firewood, and I heard somebody over here on this side say, oh, there's saplings and scrub trees. I thought, they got to be talking about a different piece of ground. You drive by there and see. The second thing I'd like to say is, one fellow brought up a report by the Corps of Engineers, and it got blown out of the water. My question is, why aren't you listening? It is a swampy area. Not suitable for housing, so I think you ought to consider those things when you vote.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Sean Liddell, I'm at 1651 Broad Lawn Avenue.
Can you do me a quick favor, sir? I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Sean Liddell.
Thank you, Sean.
1651 Broad Lawn Avenue. Just a little piece of relevant background, I served on Moline City Council for five years and also on the Bay State Regional Commission as a commissioner for five years. So I am familiar with what I would like to speak to, and it is really the comprehensive plan, and specifically Figure 1 dot 3. And Mark and I had a bit of back and forth on this during the planning and zoning, and I really wanted to, I guess, take exception to the way that Figure 1 dot 3 was presented as, or it was marginalized. Well, I read through the whole plan, it's not the least important figure, okay? It's a priority one, it's the top recommended action from Chapter 1 of your plan, preserve sensitive natural areas from development using the development suitability map, Figure 1 dot 3 is a guide. It's ranked as priority one in the plan. I know you guys can't see this, but if you have read all the presentations and watched the other video, this is a blow-up from your plan, and the area in question that's circled is the proposed development site. It is mostly red. So what red means, according to the plan, development not recommended or may be prohibited. Major considerations red should be preserved from development. Okay, so if that's true, and by state ordinance, as well as Bettendorf city code, you guys are required to use this plan and specifically Figure 1 dot 3 to review proposed developments, where is the rationale for this exception? It's a glaring exception. This whole entire parcel is red on this map, and this is a top priority of your own comprehensive plan, and, you know, I've been hearing that, you know, there's been discussion, we don't want to open up the city to lawsuit by, you know, if we voted down this plan, but, you know, there's the other side of the coin, and this could very well go to litigation if it is approved without some rationale or justification of why it's not concurrent with the approved comprehensive plan for the city of Bettendorf. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Liddell.
Hello, my name is Heather Hanell, I live at 32 Riverview Park Drive. I just wanted to bring to the aware to the Dolan group that our neighborhood school had closed Thomas Jefferson, therefore all the kids are going to Mark Twain in our neighborhood, and the natural thoroughfare to Mark Twain from our street is Lincoln Drive, which is the development planning on the exit. And I'm very concerned, obviously, with having a seven-year-old here riding bikes, walking from school, you know, any parent, it's kind of hectic to get the kids to school in the morning, and the development, having an exit on Lincoln Drive is a concern for me. I just wanted to bring that aware, I know not everyone here has young children, but it was a big disappointment in our neighborhood when the school closed and that ship has sailed. But this is just another hurdle for us and the safety of our kids in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanell, I hope I pronounced that right. Hanell, did I get it right?
Hanell, H-A-N-E-L-L.
Hanell with Ls. Okay, thank you, dear. Yes, please, state your name and address.
My name is Sylvie Summers.
My name is Sylvie Summers, and I live at 3032 East Eighteenth Street. Just a quick note, throughout McClellan Heights, there are lots of homes, obviously, and there are quite a few ravines that have been left for the purpose of wildlife and runoff. And I walked this property before I came here, and it is a huge, huge runoff. And I know that's been spoken about, but I just thought that I would throw that out there. And there's a reason why Davenport pulled out also, and I believe it's because of the topography. It's just like a big bowl. And we're talking about, if it's even possible, filling that in and assuming that everything will be hunky-dory in the future, which, with the way climate's been, we know that that probably won't be the case. And I'd also like to speak to you, obviously, I'm against this. I could see some kind of homes going there, but nothing like this. You know, maybe more of a frontal along Kimberly that was spoken about, so it's not affecting the S curve. But I also hope that you all could listen to everybody. From what I understood, the last meeting was one of the biggest that you guys have seen, which says a lot for your community and my community, and I'm really hoping that you guys can listen to all the facts and the opinions and really look at it with a critical eye and a logical eye for that land. Because I believe what you want to build there is entirely inappropriate for that space. It'd be great to see a green space, maybe some houses on the front, a green space behind that can be accessed by the public. Now, I know that takes money, too, but just throwing things out there, a lot of people have their, you know, putting their voices out there, and please, please be a logical thinker and critical and really, you know, listen to your devil and listen to your angel and hopefully, you know, things could work out. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Summers.
Ray Youngman, 508 River Drive.
Hi, Ray.
I was going to ask a question, but I'll make the general since we can't interrogate anybody. Who benefits from this project? How does the city of Bettendorf benefit from this project? How do the citizens of Bettendorf benefit from the project? That was my main concern. The other one is, I've been coming to these meetings for several years. I think this is the largest group of people that's shown up to express an opinion. Pickleball might have beat them, but... There are a lot of people who are here that are against it. I'm just wondering who is for it, and do you weigh the feelings of the community, or, I guess, the developer in this case? Thank you.
I'm Carol Ryan. I live at 3432 Crest...
Could you do me a favor? Carol, pull that down just a bit. Thank you.
Carol Ryan, 3432 Crestline Drive in Davenport. I've been there 45 years. And I previously sent an email to Mr. Mayor and the city council listing the concerns, which is pretty much what everybody here is in here. But I also think that last...
Adam?
Last night, when I was listening, several times I heard the word "emotional." And I think that's one thing that you kind of leave out. It is emotional and passionate for these people. This is their neighborhood, and that's why people have lived there for a long time and want to stay there. And I think, you know, sometimes put yourselves in our positions. If you lived there, how would you feel if this was part of what you loved about your neighborhood? So I just think that's one thing to keep in mind. Yes, I'm definitely against it, but I think the emotion and the passion is what your people, your citizens, that's what they are. Sometimes you need to listen to your citizens and not just what's maybe for the city, but what they ask for also. I would love to see that remain the way it is, maybe be donated to the city of Bettendorf and have a walking path back there, or a little park on the corner of Kimberly and Lincoln Road, something that would be a little bit more conducive and would help the whole neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
My name is Libbet Brook. I live at 1726 Broad Lawn in Davenport, and I've been to all the meetings, and I would really like to just circle back around to the very first meeting that was held, I think it was Davenport P&amp;Z, and just issue a general statement or question out there, and that is, why has that land stayed the way it is for so long? Why, all of a sudden, is this such a desired place for, as we have been saying, shoehorning too many houses into that property? So just generally think about why it is that land has stayed the way it has for as long as it has. Thank you.
My name is Gordon Seokos, spelling S-I-O-K-O-S, an old Greek name. And first of all, I want to stand up for Dan Dolan. He built a home for us. My wife and I, we lived in it for quite a few years in Bluegrass, and we never had any regrets. He's a very qualified builder. But our main concern is the eyesore of that property and how much undertaking he will have to do in order to make it an I, I appreciate it. There's so many trees to be cut down. There's sinkholes, or if you want to call them sinkholes. I can't see the profitable choice that Dan Dolan's going to go through just to create an I, take that eyesore away. I look at that eyesore all the time because I live in Slavens Manor, and I see nothing beautiful about it all. And the undertaking that Dan would have to do to make it an I-plus, I have no idea. I'm not for him doing this with profit only in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seokos.
Gordon.
Okay, Gordon. That's easier. Thank you, sir.
Hi. I'm, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Paula Teal, and I live at 39 Riverview Park Drive, and I belong with several other people here, have been to every meeting with regards to this development. One thing that has been a constant concern, Heather brought it up when she came up here, was the public safety. Several people, including myself, have requested to have an independent traffic study conducted. We were told by the city staff that one was not necessary because they had reviewed some studies on their own. This is a very unique situation with the position to the streetlight and the 290-degree hairpin turns, plus there's an entrance to another addition, another house there. I find it hard, I don't, I need someone to explain to me why the city is not willing to spend the money to have a traffic study done for the safety of their citizens. This is not, we know that you need, you want, you want to do this for the money. We all get that. It's not the right thing, but what do we say? You know, it doesn't matter, actually. But the point of the matter is you're risking people's lives. And if you can't delay this project for a matter of a month or two weeks and spend the money to do a thorough traffic study, then I don't understand what, that there's something wrong with that situation. The worst thing that can happen is that the study will come back and say, everything's hunky-dory, proceed as planned. And it's going to be three weeks down the road. So I'm just asking, as a concerned citizen, to think about the, what you're, this has long-term impacts. You're talking about the safety of the city. We need to, you need to put the needs, the quality of life for the people that live in this city over dollars. This is for 26 houses. Is it really going to bring in that much tax revenue? Are we really that desperate that we need to put 26 houses in a ravine? I think that there are other areas within the city of Bettendorf that would be suitable, would be great for houses. Why don't you give Dolan a tax incentive to develop one of those areas, rather than trying to develop an area that is not suitable for home construction? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Teal. Anybody else wish to be heard on this issue, or any other public requests of council?
I'm going to raise it up. I'm a little tall. My name is Haley Jones. I live at 1605 Coughfeld Avenue. I am one of the residents that is directly affected by this development because my backyard goes up, right up to one of the lots. But not pertaining to that, just looking at the community, that's what I want to talk about right now. From this happening right now, I've been able to meet so many neighbors. I've been able to talk to them about this and see the passion that everyone has. It has been amazing to see so many people come together on a matter of saving this piece of land. We are a premier city, meaning that we want to be first, okay? So why don't we be first in preserving the uniqueness of certain parts of the community? Our community is an older part of the city, okay? We're not out on the outer skirts of town with all of those big, beautiful homes. Each house in my neighborhood is very unique. We have wood siding. We have brick houses. We have houses with just normal siding, okay? Every single house is unique. We pride ourselves in the uniqueness. But this development that's coming in, yes, it would be awesome and be able to be geared towards senior living and whatnot, but we're taking away from the uniqueness of our neighborhood. Not to mention that this is arbitrary, but probably lowering our property values. And then, these houses don't match our neighborhood. They're going to be new, beautiful houses that, of course, we might try to make with brick and stone and make it try to look like our houses, but they're not going to. They're going to be new. They're going to be modern. They're not going to fit in our neighborhood. We are all here to stand up for how special our neighborhood is, and I really think that it's something to consider when voting for this tonight, to see everyone that's here and try to preserve some sort of our special neighborhood that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Good evening. My name is Veronique Fernandez, and I live at 903 Mississippi Boulevard. And my dad and mom live at 43 Riverview Park Drive, which is just the southern tip and will connect to about four of the proposed homes. And I'm here to ask that you vote no. And I'm also here to give you a little different perspective. My daughter is a city planner in California, so when I first saw the plans for this, I called her right away. I'm like, Jen, what can I do? And she goes, is it zoned for that? And I'm like, yes, it is. She goes, Mom, there's nothing you can do. She goes, move on, it's a done deal. She goes, but ask for what you want. So I asked for either tree screening or like a sound wall, and the staff at Bettendorf very kindly kept replying to my emails and calls right away. Everybody was very good, and they're like, oh, that's not in our code. And my daughter also thought that it's interesting that they wouldn't have a traffic study for such a large development like this. And the other thing that she really thought was not very good is there was no drive to get back to the retention pond. She goes, where she is a city planner, she goes, we would make them put some type of easement to get back to that retention pond because it will require maintenance from time to time. So my suggestion would be that perhaps another fiscal budget, we could put a little more money into maybe having a consultant take a look at our code. I think there are some things that we could add as the city is growing so well, but I would think traffic studies and perhaps, you know, trees that will be taken down. It would be nice if that was in our code, that if a developer does take trees down, that they would have to replace them. If not in that area, then perhaps another area of town that would be lacking of trees, the developer could, you know, pay for that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Anybody else wish to be heard?
My name is Alexa Florence, and I live at 1023 Kimberly Ridge Road in Bettendorf. Ironically, I also lived at 1023 Kimberly Ridge Road in Bettendorf over 50 years ago when I was a youth. And we were granted, my parents were granted, to allow us to go to school at Mark Twain because, believe it or not, even though we live on the other side of Kimberly, we were supposed to go to school at Jefferson. And at that time, Georgian Square was an apple orchard. There was no Bruegers. There was no Eastern Community College. There was no Dunn Brothers. There was nothing on that corner. There was no light. And the city and the school deemed it completely unsafe for us, the four of us, me and my siblings, to go from our home over to that zigzag intersection and get down to Jefferson. And now you are telling me that with all those added things on that intersection, which is probably one of the worst-designed streets in the city of Bettendorf, that we are now going to request that that be the main thoroughfare for the kids that are now at Jefferson to go to Mark Twain? It is a huge safety concern. If the entrance were to be on Kimberly Road, where there is already a cutout, where there's already an opening, where there's already four lanes, I would not have any concern. But I bike, I walk, I drive over that intersection multiple times a day and every week, and it is a huge issue to add a stop sign and 182 more cars a day, which is what I'm told is the average that will be added to that intersection. It's a liability and short-sighted, at least, and a liability at worst, to have that intersection encumbered. So I'm asking that we vote no to the plan the way it is right now and consider having a different entrance and exit that is safe to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Florence. Anybody else wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Kevin Dolan, developer for the cottages. The plan we are discussing here this evening is the result of nearly six months of collaborative work between our team and the city of Bettendorf. From our first concept meeting on, our team consulted with the Bettendorf city engineer, community development director, and city planner at every step of the way in order to ensure that our proposed development conformed to all relevant city ordinances and plans. And so today, we are here proposing a development consisting of 26 single-family semi-attached homes on five and a half acres. At 4.7 units per acre, this is about one-quarter of the allowable density for that site. As you heard last night from Mr. Hunt, with the current zoning, a developer could come in and put in approximately 100 units of multifamily. But again, what we intend to build are approximately 26 single-story ranch-style villas targeted towards seniors and built for owner occupants. We intend to incorporate architectural themes like brick and masonry from the historic neighborhood to maintain the character of the community, and the grounds will be maintained by a homeowners' association to ensure a consistent appearance. As part of developing the site, we pledge to maintain as many of the existing trees as possible to enhance the landscaping on the site, and we're going to add sidewalks all along the outside perimeter to increase walkability, not just for our residents, but for the entire community. We expect these villas will have a purchase price in the mid $400,000 range. This is greater than the average sale price in the adjacent neighborhood, meaning we will have a beneficial impact on property values. This will be a Class A pocket subdivision. Our proposed development is consistent with the city's comprehensive land use plan, consistent with the city zoning ordinance. It's been recommended for approval by city staff, been recommended for approval by Bettendorf Planning and Zoning. We developed this type of subdivision and build this type of senior-oriented villa all over the Quad Cities and, in fact, all over eastern Iowa. And what we've found is there is a tremendous need for this product, particularly in infill areas. Many times, the majority of our customers come from the adjacent older neighborhoods, and that's because we are building housing that allows seniors to age successfully in place. They love their neighborhood. They want to keep their... They want to keep their same neighbors, their same church and doctors, and go to the same coffee shop on the corner. But so many of their older homes were not built for accessibility. The laundry's in the basement, the bedroom's upstairs, the doorways and staircases are too narrow, and so they have to move. The question is, where do they go? It's vital that Bettendorf allows and encourages this type of housing in order to keep our seniors. Senior-oriented housing is a public good. These are low-impact users of city services and city roads. Seniors pay property taxes for public schools that they'll never use. The benefit to school districts, in fact, is so great that in other cities, we have been offered incentives by community school districts explicitly to encourage this exact type of housing. I understand some of the neighbors are opposed to this development. Change is always difficult, that is to be expected. But we value our collaborative working relationship with the city and have done our best to make concessions to be a good neighbor. When we first presented this development, there were 39 homes, not 26, and it included a connection on the south end to Crestline Drive. The neighbors expressed significant concern about the density, the number of new homes going in, as well as fears about traffic being routed through the existing housing. So, we went back to the drawing board. We reduced density, we reduced the total number of units by a third, we eliminated the connection to Crestline Drive. And additionally, just last night, at the request of Councilmember Nauman, we've committed to revise the name of the subdivision as well. We hear a lot about stormwater and drainage, and I've said before, I'm not a civil engineer. Our engineer, Mike Janisak, can talk more about the specific plan. But we've heard from the city engineer, Mr. Morlock, that there is currently a tremendous amount of stormwater that flows through this site onto the manor directly below it. And that's because there's currently absolutely no stormwater detention system in place. Right now, when we have a massive rainfall, one of those 100-year storms every few years, all of that water flows right down to the manor, and I understand from those residents at some of these meetings, they've expressed that the water has caused considerable issues at that site. We are going to change that. At our sole expense, we are going to build a stormwater detention system that will detain those 100-year storms on-site and release it directly into the storm sewer at a two-year rate, preventing it from ever reaching the manor. We are going to greatly improve the stormwater management situation in that part of the city. And as it relates to the possibility of protected streams or wetlands, we took the unprecedented step of meeting with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to ensure that they had no concerns with the site either. We've heard about traffic and safety as it relates to this subdivision, but here again, there are requirements and ordinances in place to ensure safe development, not just by us, but any developer. The city staff, the city engineer, and fire chief review these plans to ensure that the development has been designed to comply with the technical safety details. Not subjective opinions, but objective measures. The entrance, a minimum distance from the intersection, the radius of turns, the slope and the width of roads, the length, diameter, number of homes on a cul-de-sac, placement of fire hydrants, these are all objective measures that we have met. We've done our best as a development team to work with the city, to listen to the community in order to make this the very best possible development it can be, and I understand we can't make everyone happy. But the fact of the matter is, we're all playing by the same set of rules here. The same comprehensive land use plan, zoning ordinance, that protects individual landowners from certain land uses going in adjacent to them, also guarantees landowners the right to use their land in a manner consistent with the approved zoning ordinance. And that's the matter before council this evening. This development is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. It's consistent with the approved zoning ordinance that Bettendorf council has planned for and continued to affirm over the past 50 years. It's been recommended for approval by city staff, been recommended for approval by planning and zoning, and I would ask that this council approves the resolution as well. I'm happy to take any questions that the council may have this evening, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Appreciate it. Okay. Thank you all for your comments, valuable to council, I'm sure, so they can work through the next steps. Do you have something that you wanted to say? Okay, please approach the podium, state your name and your address.
Brent Rouse, 3437 Middle Road. I actually live on the S-curve and next to the proposed development. I think it's a good pitch, Kevin, same pitch that I got, you know, when he pitched me to get what he wanted out of my property. And, you know, I feel like we're supposed to be grateful that we're only putting 26 houses in a hole, you know, inside of a neighborhood that everybody is completely against. The S-curve is by far a huge concern. This entryway borders my driveway. I spoke at the city planning meeting the last time about this, but the only reason these plans have been changed is because they were forced to be changed. If he could stick 100 units in this hole, it would be being done. It's, this project is about Dolan builders making a profit at the expense of everybody else around the neighborhood. We're your citizens here. We've made significant investments. It's obvious that this is not wanted. And there are major concerns, like the traffic study that hasn't been done, the S-curve that's inappropriate for an entryway to 26 new homes, 180-something-plus cars being added to the traffic on this S-curve that's already dangerous. I live there. I deal with it every day. You have people drifting around that S-curve like it's a NASCAR track on a regular basis. The kids that are coming up and down that street every day. At the minimum, we should be considering a traffic study and moving the entrance to Kimberly Road. There's already a cutout there in the median, like everybody has said. Yeah, we might have to move around some properties, but it's what's in the best interest of this community and the neighboring houses around it. I just don't understand with all the pushback from the neighbors and your citizens, why we're still pushing to put this thing here. There's plenty of other space for the Dolans to develop. I mean, we live here. We're the ones that are gonna have to deal with this. It is absolutely not wanted, there's absolutely concerns, and it's being just glossed over. No traffic study. We also have your own city comprehensive plan that has a map that states it's in a red zone, it's not supposed to be developed, but who cares about that? The citizens are concerned. There's plenty of other places to put 26 homes. Putting these 26 homes in a hole is not the right place to put this development, it's just not. So, apologize for being a little upset, but obviously, it is emotional, like all you guys said. So, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse. Okay. Thank you for your thoughts and your concerns. At this point in time, we'll close public requests of council. Let's move to the resolution. Before we actually go to the resolution, we'll have our Director of Community Development, Mark Hunt, just give us an overview if you can, Mark, and our engineer, Brent Morlock. We'll invite you guys to give us a bit of an overview. Last night, of course, you provided lots of information. Council had the opportunity to ask all their questions at that point in time and get all of them answered, but just do a quick overview for us, and then we will move to our resolution.
Okay, sure, I can provide that summary. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Let me just prepare the slide deck here for you. I've cut down last night's presentation, which was over an hour, into seven slides. I can also cut back any slides that you may want to see again, so I'd be happy to do that. Case 21050, cottage at McLone Heights, preliminary plat. Staff's job in this case is to review the preliminary plat, that is, the subdivision of the land, to make sure it is divided, subdivided correctly according to city and state law. I trust you've all seen this many times, but here is the preliminary plat. The resolution on the PowerPoint presentation's a little bit hard to see, but you're familiar with the orientation. I will point out a few things why we're here. We do have a rear yard setback of 35 feet with a berm. That's according to code. Without the berm, it would be 50 feet. You do have 700 feet of sidewalk along Kimberly Road, that's new sidewalk, adding connectivity from roughly the end of the manor up to the existing sidewalk. Also, sidewalk, I think the only sidewalk on Lincoln will be added here. Utilities come mainly from the developed area of Kimberly. This is a developed part of town, so utility connections really are not an issue at all. The site drains from high to low, as it would, which is north to south-easts, if you will, and that provides drainage direction for both stormwater and sewer. There is an outlot reserved for water retention here. And a second lot that will not be developed, just off-screen over here. As we all know, Kevin Dolan, Dan Dolan Homes, 5.9 acres, 26 single-family attached town Future land designation is urban low intensity, that is, suitable for residential. It is currently zoned residential, R3 mixed residential, so that is our second from the highest intensity of residential development. By the way, it's been zoned that since 1971, looking back in staff records, and has remained that consistently through multiple updates of the city map, future land use map, zoning map, and comprehensive plans. It is supported by Comp Plan Goal D, provide housing options and reinvest in the neighborhood, existing neighborhoods, excuse me. I think we've covered all of these when we reviewed the slide before.
One thing, Mark, if I could add to the utilities, Mayor and council, that the question of the well adjacent to the property was brought up last night, and both Mark and I did quite a bit of digging today. We've talked with, talk with city of Davenport, we've talked with Scott County Health Department, also talked with Iowar American Water Company. We did confirm that the adjacent property to the west, the Rouse property, as well as the two properties that are being acquired here, are currently on Iowar American Water, so they are on public water supply, which means there is no potable well being utilized and would not be able to be utilized by city code or Scott County code due to the presence of the city water service. And I know that was a question in terms of possible contaminations. If a well was present, it could still be used for irrigation purposes, but again, at which point, possible contamination, which we went over last night, the horizontal separation that were met, but again, the contamination would not be an issue because it is not a potable well at this point. And I should also add that the county health department did not have any records of wells in the adjacent property. Now, they, in their defense, they said they didn't start keeping records till about the mid-'90s, and so if the homes obviously were built before then, they may have had a well, but again, confirm that everybody's on public water supply.
As has been mentioned, the access plan is provided through, the access is provided via Lincoln Road. The intersection will be converted into a true T-intersection with two stop signs. I did show you the graphic last night, if you do recall. Stop sign on the north side for traffic heading south, and a stop sign from the east for traffic heading west. The, I'm sorry, for traffic heading north. Westly traffic does not stop, it continues to flow through. There will be pedestrian buttons added at the Kimberly Road intersection, so that will help with pedestrian crossings there. You'll be able to push a button, wait for your timed light. This has a positive staff recommendation. It was approved for it by Planning and Zoning Commission. We would recommend approval with the conditions outlined in the staff report. I can provide other slides or answer any questions you might have.
I think we had a thorough presentation last night, but are there any questions on anything raised tonight or anything further you'd like discussed? Councilmember Webster got my attention first.
I just have a question. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask the developer a question now or later, Your Honor?
They're here. If you have a, if you have one, then we can do your discussion when the resolution is proposed. Thank you, Kevin.
Mr. Dolan, I know that you've looked at and trying to keep trees as much as possible. I also come a little bit as a home builder, maybe not necessarily a developer, but realize that's not always so available. Will you be putting trees back in some of these backyards to help screen, if need be, where you can't utilize, keep in existing trees?
To some extent, yes. We have, we have been working with the city on a draft of our landscaping plan that does show trees in many of the backyards.
The second question I had was, is I did get a chance to meet with some people down at the manor, and this concern comes up all the time in wet retention ponds. When a wet retention pond's there, it's, it can become stagnant, it can become bad, bad water, essentially. It turns algae. Have you put any consideration or are you looking at putting a fountain in that to at least keep that algae and stuff down on the back area there near the manor?
It is an added expense to the development, of course, but in the spirit of cooperation, we would be willing to add a fountain to the retention pond.
That would be a heck of a thing to do because that, I mean, we found that in our own city pond out off of Middle Road. As long as those fountains stay in there, that pond typically stays in pretty good shape. Matter of fact, people fish in it all the time. But that does help that pond, so that would be great to see if that goes forward that way.
Happy to do it. Thank you.
Alderman, our councilmember, Sexer, had something, then I'll go to councilmember Baden. These are questions for staff, and I suppose if the developer's here, if you have one for the developer, that's fine, too. And then, of course, after the resolution is brought before you, you'll have your opportunity to discuss the same. Councilmember Sexer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Safety of pedestrians has been one of the issues that was brought up, and on that S-curve, we've got a problem in that even if Mr. Dolan puts in a sidewalk on his development there along Lincoln, on the south side of Lincoln there, there is still no connective, connection of that sidewalk to another sidewalk in Davenport. The piece of, of Lincoln Road that goes north and south has no sidewalk on either side of it. It appears as though we have enough right-of-way along that road. Have we considered requiring that property owner or the city involved in it to put in a piece of sidewalk so that there would be connection to the existing sidewalk on Middle and existing sidewalk on Lincoln Road? We're putting in pedestrian buttons, but yet, the only way people could get there would be walking the road.
Mr. Morlock?
Yeah, councilmember Sexer, it has not been a policy under our existing sidewalk program to do many of these gaps around town, mostly due to the added maintenance to a property owner, but if that was council's desire, it could easily be done under next year's sidewalk repair program. I would also like to have a conversation with that property owner as well to make sure they understand the additional shoveling.
One of the balances we have tonight, isn't it?
But yes, if that was council's desire, that could easily be accomplished under that program.
Yes, because on the west side there, that property owner is actually in Davenport.
Yeah, exactly.
But I bring it up because, you know, the, one of the residents mentioned walking to school. And the only way to get to school right now from the west side of Interstate or west side of Kimberly is either use this road or go down to State Street or Mississippi, or not Mississippi, Holmes, both of which are going through a construction zone.
Councilmember Baden.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Morlock, last night, we did talk about something, and I just hope it won't get lost in the shuffle, and I'm mentioning this for the people that are here tonight because I'm keeping track of how many people are talking about different items, and safety is pretty high, is the possibility of extending Middle Road straight through to Kimberly Road, and that would take the pressure off of this S-curve that we keep talking about. Is that something that can be done? I think we have a right-of-way there already.
We did look at that, councilmember Baden, and we do have the right-of-way. I had a discussion today with the Davenport city engineer. They said they'd absolutely work together to have both cities study that because that would then provide a direct connection to Davenport. You know, there would be no additional traffic added to Bettendorf, that would be a direct connection to a Davenport street. But they said they would be happy to look at that with us, and it does line up across, across Kimberly to the Burlington Coat Factory entrance.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff or possibly the builders, since they're in the house? Yes, councilmember Nauman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, I'd like to have a point of clarification on this unbuildable red zone that a couple of folks alluded to in terms of the comprehensive plan and maybe some opportunity to address that point.
Thank you, councilman Nauman. I'll take that question, if you don't mind. Yeah, I'd be glad to talk to the way our comprehensive plan works, and I've said this before, I think I said it last night for sure, and probably in previous meetings. And I've said this before, I think I said it last night for sure, and probably in previous meetings. This is an exhibit out of our comprehensive plan. It is one part of our plan. It is not our whole plan. It is a starting point, not the end point for our analysis as staff. And so when we look at this, you see many areas in town that are red, including the site of our city industrial park, roughly in this area. What that means is we have extra measures that may be needed to develop in those areas. Those areas often include floodplain, wetlands, slopes, and those have to be mitigated. For the floodplain, we require two-foot of fill to get you out of the floodplain and a floodplain permit reviewed by city staff. We've done that frequently. I think we've done it three to five times just in my tenure here, which is just over a year. So that part of our comprehensive plan informs our policy, informs our decision-making, but it is not city code, and it is not the final decision. In fact, the final decision is actually yours as council. So staff analysis did, did look at this, and we also looked at other more specific, more granular data. Remember, your plan is a 30,000-foot view. This is, this is a 30,000-foot view. It's not a site-specific analysis. It requires a site-specific analysis, which we did. Here's a floodplain map with the FEMA floodplain shown on it. You can see the closest floodplain is probably here by Duck Creek Road. This area is not in a floodplain. It's not in a FEMA floodplain. It's also not a wetland as defined by the American Waters Act. When you look at the slope and you look at a more granular map, you see that using LiDAR, which is essentially laser data to shoot slopes, that the most steep slopes in this area actually are not on the project site. They're down here. Much of the project sites yellow or green. Staff has required, through our comment letter, that appropriate fill techniques be used and that those fill be measured and measurements brought to staff so that we can make sure that they're meeting our standards. I won't go through all the historical photos, but I will show you that in terms of what this land has been over time. Here's a 1930's aerial. It was probably hayfield pasture, pasture ground at that time. And it was for most, from 1930 on, for most of that time, up until 1990, this type of agricultural use. Then you see in the '90s, the more heavy woods come in. But going back in time, '60 and '70, right around the time the manor came in, this was pasture ground. I'd be happy to provide some information. Mr. Norman, does that satisfy you?
I think it's a nice refresh from, obviously, last night, and I think, you know, it satisfies my question. I guess the other thing that I would love to have reiterated for my edification are the legal basis for this transaction. And I'm not sure if Councilor Curran is on the line or if someone would like to address, like, the R3 and the legal ramifications of our decision, the position that council is in and trying to not only help the citizens, but in the balance of the citizens in the city of Bettendorf have an interest in this as well. There are some legal concerns, Your Honor.
Chris, are you joining us?
Yes, Your Honor, I am here. Can you all hear me?
We can, please. Go ahead.
And thank you for the question. This, as, as has been stated, this is zoned R3, and the proposed development is, is appropriate for the zoning. Zoning decisions, as we've talked before, are legislative decisions. That's not what's on the table tonight. This is a subdivision plat that's, that's before council. It's a quasi-judicial decision where you are applying the facts to the law. Our law is Title 12 of our subdivision ordinance that Mark and Brent have talked about. It's also Chapter 354 of the Iowa Code, which is incorporated into our subdivision ordinance. Essentially, what that calls for is for council to look at the comprehensive plan, to look at the zoning ordinance, to determine whether it's appropriate under those documents, then to look at public infrastructure and if the proposed subdivision would, would have a problematic or, you know, would not work with our infrastructure, with our streets, with our, with our, with our, you know, stormwater issues, which is also obviously more specifically addressed in Title 12. And then finally, to, to perform a balancing test, balancing the interests of the property owner, the, the future owners of property in that subdivision, and the public in general. So it's those three parties all need to be weighed. Certainly, we've heard a lot of comments tonight, and a lot of those comments are, you know, describing the, the public concern or interest, but, but we do need to weigh all three interests, including the owner of the property.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any further questions or clarifications?
Any further questions for Chris on this issue? Okay. How about any further questions for staff?
I have a lot of comments.
Yep.
Some are staff mixed in.
Well, are they comments or questions? If you have a question for staff, you need some information, now is the time. If you have comments that you want to discuss and make your voice heard, that's as part of the discussion at the resolution phase.
I guess we'll go, I'll, we'll go comments, so.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. So we'll move to councilmember Webster, please, for our resolution.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the preliminary plat of cottages at McLemone Heights. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
All right, there is our cue for discussion. Councilmember Brown.
Okay. I've got some lengthy ones, and I'm going to tie them to some of the stuff that Chris said, but we're elected officials here, so. Sorry. We're elected officials here, so we're supposed to represent the citizens. We're supposed to represent the budget, look at how the taxes are spent, and look out for the future planning of the city. So this, Dolan's do a nice project. I've looked at, I've actually looked personally at one of these, whatever, in 2011. So I just don't think this fits in that spot. It's a nice plan, but just not that spot. I can start with some different spots. I don't think we looked at that suitability map. I think until I brought it up at one point, thanks to Sean, who brought it to my attention. So shame on us also for not tying that suitability map in when we are doing the land use plan. And the fact that it's been R3 for all these years since '71 doesn't make any sense to me. Mark, thank you for pulling all that information over the decades on what it's been, pasture, farm ground and stuff. That's great, but look across the state. You know, the state, you've got farmers that put land out there and they try to farm it. You know, it's wetlands, yada, yada. And now the state is paying them to keep it wetlands because they don't want it farming it, so they pull it out of production. This, I don't want to say it's a garbage piece, but it's a, not a good piece of property, and it's obvious that they're not farming it because it's not suitable for that. It's also not suitable for housing. So I'm going to go through that, but then let me hit traffic first because we keep bringing that up. This is not something that should be going out of Middle Road. And we keep talking about traffic study. I don't think that's the word. I think we should just talk about maybe evaluation of that location. And I know Brent Sarri, you were getting beat up the other day at zoning, which, you know, the way we evaluate is the national standard. So I feel bad he was getting beat up, which he shouldn't have because, you know, that's what he's supposed to be doing, is looking at that. We caught, keep talking about traffic studies, so we've got our guidelines as far as, you know, how we do that as a city. You know, we did a traffic study for when we put in Hungry Hobo. But DOT did a traffic study of that area in 2018, and they had 2,500 cars going through there. You know, and now, I know The Times put in the, an article today, they had looked at one of the Dolan developments, but that's a whole different type of neighborhood. This is, you know, a funky S-curve that you don't find anywhere else. You've got a lot of people cutting from East Village. You've got the mess on Locust when something's got, constantly cutting through there. I didn't realize kids were cutting up through there, rerouting to the new school, which is totally unsafe. So I think we need to look at that differently. I had asked last night if we had just made like a little call to Davenport. Totally blown off, didn't get an answer on that, which is the first, you know, that that's ever occurred. But it sounds like since then, you know, you've called them today. I would ask that if for some reason this moves forward, that we do proceed with moving that so that we're going through that and acquire that home that's zoned commercial. And whether it's, you know, co-purchase between the city and the developer, I don't know. Something needs to be done. I think we do that now instead of wait later because the stop sign is not going to work. So I think we need to do that now and figure that out before moving forward. On the stormwater park. Okay, with that suitability map, you know, it was designated not suitable. So here we're looking at putting in houses. We've got flooding stuff going on now. The topography's bad. You know, the zoning should have never been done like that. We've, we spent how many years looking at putting together a stormwater plan for around the community? We are dealing with, you know, decades of problems that we've got, that previous city councils have gone through when they've let developers build too close to waterways or streams. And I'll use an example in Greg's Ward up by 18th and Crow Creek. There's a home that has, what, like six feet of the backyard left because it was built too close. And we've spent all this time talking about getting something in place with developments going in and, you know, put some guidelines in. And we've got the stormwater fee now that's charged to every home, and that turns around, and we've got, we've prioritized stormwater projects. And we have only so much in the budget. Every year we do those projects, we've got only so many staff. And here, we're looking at 26 homes in an area that's not suitable for building that we know we're going to have problems with, that guess what? The rest of the community is going to get to pay for those problems later. So makes no sense to me. And I'm going to be disappointed. I hate to say this, you know, there's individuals that have been very insistent on this stormwater plan being crafted, and I hope that person is supportive of blocking this, basically, because this is totally going against that. I mean, we're supporting something that that is working against, so. And I guess if the citizens, I've talked to so many. If they've got water problems, I guess who do they sue? Do they go to the developer or do they come to us? But another issue we've come across, and you guys know this, we've now started to require developers to put in all these detention-retention ponds. And I know it's going to be put in to this development. What happens is they're developed and they're put into an HOA, homeowners association, as far as the people that are supposed to maintain it. Well, and I was a homeowners HOA president, so I know this happens. All of a sudden, that HOA doesn't know they have to maintain it. So now we're dealing with trying to identify true guys. The homeowners associations who have no clue that they were supposed to take care of it. So now we're starting to take those over. So, you know, I don't know if that's written into your bylaws yet for homeowners association to take, take care of that. Just talked about a fountain going in, which I heard that last week, so that wasn't something that was just decided now. So I'm totally concerned about this. I mean, it doesn't make sense to build a subdivision where we've got it identified as not suitable. So I'm totally disappointed in that. The traffic entrance makes no sense. I mean, there's a study with the DOT out. I don't think, we keep talking about study, but I think it needs to be an evaluation, and we need to push that through if we truly are going to move forward with this right now. I've also heard, basically, kind of makes me sick, but if this was turned down, that there's threats that if we were going to push this towards, that they've got to come through from Kimberly, that that higher, you know, four-story deal would be going in kind of as a threat. And I hope to heck that's not the attitude as far as playing in the sandbox because, you know, that's not the way we do business in Bettendorf. So I don't know. I, we're here for the citizens, so I think that's why we were elected, so. And I've been listening to tons of calls and emails, and they have a big investment in their homes. And it's a great development, but I think we need to maybe help them locate and find a spot in Bettendorf that maybe would be suitable. So as the pastor said, prosperity and safety in his prayer. So I think if we could help locate a different spot, maybe to build this and keep this existing area safe. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Okay, remember, I was very clear. There won't be clapping, there won't be stomping, there won't be cheers, or you'll leave. Councilmember Connors, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I think we need to take a step back for a minute and realize what we're looking at approving tonight. It is a preliminary plat. It's not a rezoning. It's not a site development plan. Preliminary plats, you're supposed to look at how the plat meets our codes, ordinances, and plans. And you're supposed to vote on whether it meets those requirements or not. I mean, we have a very talented, diligent, professional staff. I'm proud to say I worked alongside many of them in a previous life, and I trust them, trust them very much. We should go ahead and approve the preliminary plat as recommended by our professional staff because it meets all of our requirements. And that's what we're supposed to be considering tonight. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Adamson, do you have any comments? And then I'll move to my right.
Just a, just a couple, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir.
We had another development up in my ward, up on the hill. It was a restaurant going in, and previous councils had allowed homes to be built right up to the commercial property. And I was jumping up and down trying to get it not, not be put in. And I was told by our competent staff and legal that, well, you can, you can get four people to vote against it, and then they're going to ask you, the courts, what is it that they haven't done that you require? And I said, "Well, they've, they've met all the requirements. I just don't like it." People live right there. There's lights and noise and all that stuff. I don't like it. I don't like this one. But as Bill just said, they've met the requirements. And I don't think that we have the authority to, to turn down this preliminary plat. So I, I have to vote for it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Sexer?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've, I've listened to our city attorney, and, and he talked about a balancing act. So, while this development has met the technical requirements, there's another side of it, and that is the subjective side. And we specifically talk about that in Appendix 1 of our city code. While Appendix 1 is designed for a site plan review, we have to consider those requirements in, in this development because as a residential development, it will not have a site plan review. So, we need to consider those now. And our specific requirements here include, which is part of our city code, and I'm going to read a couple things. Purpose, in accordance with the comprehensive plan of the city, it's essential that new developments or currently undeveloped land meet established minimum standards, such as waters, sewer, and roads, and promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. And then on another page, the proposed development should be designed in such a manner as not unduly diminish or impair the use and enjoyment of adjoining or surrounding property. I think this is a, a good project, except it's in the wrong place. I don't think it fits here, and therefore, I will be voting no.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Baden, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
Councilmember Nauman, any thoughts?
I have nothing further, Your Honor.
Councilmember Webster?
Sure, Your Honor. I happen to agree with our staff on the suitability map. Oddly enough, I was on the committee that created, helped create that along with Bill. It's actually a color-coded map that goes from dark red, unsuitable to lighter shades of red. I asked, oddly enough, going all the way back, I remember actually asking that question because I thought it was a very odd part of the, the plan. It was that guy that, with the weird hair that drove around on the bike. I still remember that. I don't remember his name.
I remember him.
But I, Marty, that's his name. I asked that very thing because it was a very interesting map to me. Did it show up in a book quite as great as it was? Probably not. The hardest part about this, in these situations that come up, obviously, huh, I'm in the area where everybody wants to throw houses out there, in the cornfields. But we still have developments up against other neighboring houses quite often. I think staff knows I constantly try to argue to try to get a little bit of compromise in situations, trying to get trees, trying to get fountains, trying to do everything like all of us council members do, try to concede a little bit when we know we're kind of backed up against a wall. I grew up with my parents telling me that there's two things guaranteed in life, death and taxes. The one thing they forgot about was change. Everything's always changing, and it's always the hardest one. It's oddly enough, the hardest, the one that nobody can quite grapple with as much as death and taxes. I always argued about the taxes more than the change, but I know it's difficult for the neighbors in this particular situation. I know that I don't think it's a threat that necessarily that more things can go in there. I'm not a developer. I am a home builder. I just buy lots. But I know kind of how developers think, and things got to pencil out. And if you did go to Kimberly Road, probably would have to put a traffic light there if you could do it with the grade of the hill. And then you would get denser, and it would get worse. It's just the way it works. We, and the thing I've learned from being on councils, you can't deny people access to their ground, and you can't necessarily deny people use of their ground. Prior to being here, I probably thought that you could. So, sometimes your decisions can get worse. I've, I voted for things within my ward that I didn't like at all. Couldn't stand them. But the difference in between a housing development and a gas station or something crazy in some of those areas out there, I had to make the choice that, you know, I didn't really want, citizens really didn't want, but they realized that it could be worse, and sometimes you got to compromise. The one fear I do have for this subdivision, if it does pass and go through, is more during construction. I did see that in the PNC a little bit while it's not stabilized. Hopefully, if it goes through, you, you, you give Rob some, 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 some good authority to make sure that in an unstabilized case, it's not hurting the manor down there. And it'll probably be an area he's got to watch a little bit harder, heavier. But I know Rob, and I know he can be a stickler. I've been on the wrong side of that quite often. So, in my opinion, it's better than what it could be. I know this is a preliminary plat. There's, there's more things to come. I know, and I'm confident that your engineering will work. I'm confident that the building department will make sure, because we've done it in the past, that the soil is correct, was done out there off 53rd. I'm confident in that. Do I love it? No. But I know what it could be, and it could be way worse. And that's the fear I have. So, I will be supporting this offer.
Sir? All right. Seeing no further discussion, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
No.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
No.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Okay. The matter passes five to two at the preliminary plat stage. The next item on our agenda is a open public meeting. This is with regard to the subdivision regulations and public ways and property. Is there anything new you want to report to us at the continued...
Your Honor, can we take a break while the crowd is dispersing, please? I'm having a hard time hearing.
Understandable. Okay. We'll take a break in place here, and we'll ask that you leave orderly and quiet as you can so we can continue our meeting. Okay, Brent, you've got the floor. Is there anything you want to share with us with regard to the public hearing we left open?
Yes.
Okay, please do.
Several updates since we left this open. I had a few more discussions with the builders and developers that were part of our, kind of our focus group there. Had another discussion with Mid-American. We developed what we believe is a very comprehensive detail to put this in. We've run that by several, I sent it back out for all the developers. Did get a little bit of comment, actually from one of the contractors, some good questions. I think we have this dialed in as best we can. We realize that there's not going to be a one-size-fits-all for this. The detail that we've developed, I think, will fit 90% of our subdivisions. Depending on the specific engineering, we may have to make a change here or there. So, the detail itself has, has been locked down. What we also have discussed is, and this was after discussions with Mr. Blaine, was similar to the change that was before my time here, but when drainable base was added, knowing that it's an extra development cost to the developers, to help offset that change of offering a cost share that would potentially be, and I think this matched what the drainable base was, where it was a 50-50 cost share with the cit, between the city and the developer for the first three years of the change, and then a 25-75 city developer share for two years, and then at five years, it would phase out completely and, and be on the developer.
What's a specific change that we would be helping to fund?
This would be strictly for the sump pump manifold system, the sump pump collection system.
Okay.
That would not apply to the wider sidewalks. It would just be the, the development cost. We did talk about it with sidewalks a little bit. We thought that's, you know, a small enough price that the homeowners could absorb that. Additionally, the administrative costs of potentially issuing 150 to 200 sidewalk reimbursements a year really just would far outweigh the cost. So, it would just be the sump pump collection systems. And additionally, the, the, the way that we could offset the, the cost back to, the reimbursement back to the developers is, we have a, a way to do that in that we collect subdivision inspection fees. So, we charge while our construction inspectors are out there. That, the, the storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and the paving all get billed to that developer. We could rebate some of that, basically adjust that billing to help account for our reimbursement back to them. So, hopefully, it is either a wash or a minimal cash outlay of the city for these as well.
Your Honor, when we, when we talked about this, we felt that not every subdivision necessarily is going to require, it's going to be based on our experience in the development areas. So, we know, for instance, in the area of up by Forest Grove Park, I can't think of the name of the street.
Huntington Meadows.
Huntington Meadows, that we've got springs occurring out there, and we've got drainage problems now. We know that any adjacent subdivisions to those, that area, we would likely do that. There may be other areas where we've not had any experience in that regard. And so, we would, we would count on engineering and, and Public Works to look at that data and, and give us that recommendation. Plus, typically, you have the development as a single developer. So, you're billing one party, not 160 parties. It's, it's a much easier thing to manage from our perspective. And when we did this years ago, I'm not sure who I remember on the council, I know Bill was on staff at that time. This was very well received by the home builders. We did it over a five-year period. It really was not that costly. And we phased it out in five years, and it became, drainable base has been in our, our program now for probably 20 years at least. And it was very successful. So, that's why we thought that this would be a, a carrot to make this happen. We think it's a good way to make this maneuver happen.
Okay. Questions? Councilmember Connors?
So, Mr. Morlock, the, my understanding is that this is going to be run to the property line, and then there'll be the home builders or the individual homeowner's responsibility to make that connection.
That's correct. It's actually, Councilmember Connors, it's actually probably going to be a little short of that. So, what we've run into, the issue with installation of this going in before Mid-American installs their utilities, if we went ahead and ran a stub for each lot all the way to the property line, Mid-American would come through and cut right through this for every lot. So, what we've kind of agreed to is we're going to hold this thing back as close as we can to the curb, just a couple of feet out. So that way, Mid-American can come through, they can install their gas and electric, then the homeowner will come and connect. So, it might add another eight to 10 feet of four-inch corrugated pipe is all that would be.
So, the developers should be greatly in favor of this, and I know some developers have taken some flak tonight. But it takes the heat off the developer on this sump pump water issue and throws it on either the home builder or the homeowner.
Yeah, and gives them a path to successfully manage that. Now, we, we did say that we are not going to mandate that every home hooked to this. However, if we do get code enforcement complaints, so if we have icing or we have algae growing because they refuse to hook and they're just running out on the curb, they're going to get a very short notice, probably 30 days to make that connection. I think most of the builders that we talked to will just run this on the front end and already have it accommodated.
Thanks for your answer.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a public hearing that, yes?
Your Honor, just one last point to this. What we would do is, is have you close the public hearing, proceed with the first reading of the ordinance. We would have the companion resolution either at the second or the third reading that authorizes the payment by the city in the plan with the home builders, so that we would have it at the third reading, the companion resolution that identifies what we're going to do and how we're going to participate.
We could waive that third reading.
We could. Our thought is either the second or the third.
Not on this one, because you're going to bring that for the first time next time.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
And the implementation will change just slightly from what we had put here. The intent is still that any final plat that has not been submitted for planning and zoning consideration will be subject to the wider 53-foot right-of-way after this passes. Sidewalk, the five-foot sidewalk will not go into effect until, as we stated, January 1 of next year. But the sump pump collection systems, we thought, since the city is now cost-sharing in this, that we would like to implement that immediately. So, we're probably only going to have one or two that, probably the most, that still may come in later this year. So, that dollar figure should still be very minimal. But we would like to start that now.
All right. So, we are continuing an open public hearing. If there's anybody here who wishes to be heard on this item, you can do so by approaching the podium in the back. Please state your name and address. We'd like to hear from you. All right. So, then we will close this public hearing, and we'll move to our first reading of an ordinance. Councilmember Baden, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the first reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Municipal Code Title 12 entitled subdivision regulations and Title 7 entitled public ways and property. I move approval of the ordinance's first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second. What's the discussion on this item? Anything? Okay, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
All right. We move to our public hearing with regard to the 18th Street reconstruction project from St. Andrews Circle to Barcelona Street. This is a much-needed project we have talked about for a while. How about our Public Works Director, Brian Schmidt? Tell us what we're doing.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is reconstructing that section of 18th Street, just as you spoke of. We're actually reducing the width to 31 foot back-to-back, reconstructing that. There's no storm sewer involved, so we're, we're keeping that east curb line available where the adjacent homes are off of 18th Street. And it'll have drainable basins and drain tile as well to accommodate it. It's important to note, too, that there is a double catch basin at the intersection of 18th Street and Barcelona, right in this individual's driveway. We will, we will be reconstructing that storm sewer there and taking it out of that driveway, which those homeowners are greatly appreciative of us doing that.
All right. Any questions for Brian on the project? Understanding what's coming. Yes, Councilmember Adamson?
Actually, a question. Just thank you very much because that, that whole street's falling apart, and where that homeowner is at the end, it's a mess all the time. So, this is a great project and look forward to getting that done. So, thank you for your diligence on that.
Thank you, Mr. Adamson. And also, you noted before that we brought up at a previous meeting that we will be reconstructing that next phase from St. 18th Street, from St. Andrews to the south, actually, within two years.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Fantastic. Any other questions? Okay. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did. Your Honor and I do have affidavit publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right. Let's open the public hearing with regard to reconstruction of 18th Street. Anybody wish to be heard on this item? Let's close the public hearing, and please move to a resolution for Councilmember Adamson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the plan specifications in form of contract for the 18th Street reconstruction project from St. Andrews Circle to Barcelona Street. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Obviously, we all like this project. Been hearing about it for years, trying to work it into the queue. Okay, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
We have unanimously approved each and every item on our consent agenda. It's time to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
We stand adjourned. Good work, people.